Thank you. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 9th, 2018 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May we have a roll call, please?
Shirley, Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Welcome. Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Sosson?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will be heading into executive session, so I will read the motion. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matters to be discussed is negotiation/ legal matter and personnel matters. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and second, please?
So much.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Are there all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going into closed session. Thank you. Back up. Sorry about the delay, but we'd like to get the meeting started. So, may I have a roll call first?
Shirley, Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Sosson?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Can everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to change the order of our usual meeting, and we're going to move ahead because we have some very special guests here tonight, and we would like to see their performance. So, Dr. Schiff, would you like to introduce them?
It would be my pleasure, Madam President. Each month, we try to focus in on some great things that are going on throughout the district. This evening, we have representatives from both Sunnymead Elementary School and the high school. First up is Sunnymead, and they're going to share with us some work that they're doing with writing and kind of an under-the-sea type of experience. It's really exciting. And here to introduce our staff and our students is the principal of Sunnymead Elementary School. Please join with me in welcoming Dr. Tammy Jenkins.
It is my distinct privilege and pleasure to introduce to you two of our very talented teachers and some of our extremely talented, beautiful, bright students. And they're going to share with you a learning experience that the entire Sunnymead School student body had an opportunity to partake in. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce you to our dynamic duo, Mr. DeLuigat and Mrs. Purdy.
Hello, and thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'm Ari DeLuigat. I'm the art teacher over at Sunnymead Elementary School. Tonight, we're here to show you the power of unencumbered creative thought without oversight, overtesting, or overinstruction. When Mrs. Purdy and I started transforming the Sunnymead stage, it began as just a small project, perhaps a couple weeks of prep work, followed by a couple days of construction. We began with a pumpkin patch, moved to a winter wonderland, created a tropical jungle, complete with safari jeep waterfall, tree canopy, and monkeys. And each design each year getting more and more elaborate with the sole purpose of inspiring children, sparking creativity and, more importantly, how to write using their senses. This past fall, Mrs. Purdy and I pulled out all the stops. We wanted a wow factor, that when the children walked into the stage, all they could say was, "Wow." And it took months of planning and months of preparing. The coolest thing is that this was a truly collaborative project, one that utilized the time and talents of multiple staff members, as well as students, to make the animals and paint and props. We used paper, cardboard collected from Lowe's, umbrellas, holiday lights. Everyone from kindergarten to fourth grade to one of our school secretaries, Donna Primiani, had their hand in turning our vision into reality. Sometimes I think that Dawn and I get so giddy about opening up the stage to children that it's kind of like your birthday, and you waited for this one gift for a long time, and you kind of know that you're going to get it, and you're not totally sure. But when the children walk into the stage, you realize that that is the true gift right there, is when you see their eyes and their faces light up. Even better was when I saw some of you folks show up, and some of the parents show up and see the stage. And because, you know, it gets really hard to impress adults with cardboard paint and toilet paper rolls. I wish that everyone would have the opportunity to see what's on the stage. We're going to do our best to show a video tonight, but it doesn't nearly do the justice that if you got to experience, that, you know, it would have been great for you to see it. So, again, I hope you enjoy watching the video and hearing the voices of the children. And thank you very much for having us, and enjoy. Thank you.
I thought it was weird looking at all the lights and everything. I thought it was really cool looking. When I first walked in, I looked up and it felt like I was really in the ocean, because it had the sounds. Like pretty, like it was breathtaking with the lights and all, you know, the details and everything.
Like, it was very, like, mind-boggling, like, the fact that the teachers could do that. It gets very impressive to see that. That's like something you don't see every day, really.
It felt like I could draw in here for hours and just sketch out, like, the whole scene, and it just inspired me to write a wonderful story about the ocean, and I'm just so happy that people put this together to inspire us to write, and I just, I feel like this could be my drawing spot where I'd just go every single day.
And then, like, the jellyfish, fish, like, they dangled it, like, over my head, so cool.
I did, like, the ocean under my fingertips, because it felt like I was just, like, touching it.
Yeah, like, except, like, there's no water and you're not wet.
Yeah.
It was cool.
Yeah.
It looked like I just walked into the ocean.
Usually, I would struggle to, um, think of an idea in class, because I can't, don't have much to think about, I can't see, but in here, I have a better idea, because there's so much detail to it, and all kinds of things you can see.
Does our classroom look like this usually?
No.
No. It's colorful and fun, but it's definitely not ocean, no. Summer, how did it make you feel?
Nervous.
Why, nervous?
I was nervous.
You thought something was going to jump out. It is really realistic, and I can understand that.
Kind of how did it inspire your writing?
So, I just wrote a poem about everything, like, you can't just, like, leave something this, like, beautiful alone.
I really have the best job in the world. Now I get to introduce to you the amazing writers that are representing Sunnymead School tonight. I can't say enough about our Sunnymead students. Every year, I'm left in awe of the amazing humans that I get a chance to work with every single day, and this year is no different. It's a proud moment that 11 of our students, grades one through four, are here tonight to represent our school. The writing that you're going to hear originated when the students entered the transformed stage. They were given only two instructions: use what you see, what you hear, and how you feel to inspire you, and just keep writing. There were no boundaries. Students produced writing from every genre, including poetry, realistic fiction, fantasy, personal narratives, and it was all better than I could have ever imagined. As diverse as the finished pieces were, they all had one thing in common: imagery, figurative language, and strong word choice. So, today, you get a little, little snapshot of the amazing things that happened at our school, and these are the representatives for all 400-plus of our students, where I could have brought all of them, and every one of them could have stood up here and blown your socks off. So, please give your attention to our Sunnymead students.
Hi, I'm Bridget Smith, and I'm in fourth grade. Stepping into the breathtaking underwater oasis, I didn't know what to say. The coral, fish, and humongous eye mermaid tail pirate ship and jellyfish swallowed the stage and twisted it up into an extraordinary view. The big eyes light filled the room with brightness and joy with all the jellyfish's help. The whales cried overflowed the room with laughter. As you looked one way, you would see a school of fish while you heard a whale calling in the distance. A mermaid's tail swam away from a giant staring eye. The coral reefs hid the treasure chest from intruders or pirates. The underwater oasis was the most breathtaking handmade thing I saw.
Hi, I'm Nociana, and I'm in fourth grade. Once I cannonballed into the underwater oasis, I felt as if I sank deep down into the ocean. As I swam around, I saw all different creatures like jellyfish and neon clownfish bubbling around me. The scuba diver and the shark swimming next to the tide made it all come to life. The whales using their echolocation to find each other was outstanding. As I was gliding around the underwater oasis with amusement, I found a humongous kraken arm with tentacles wiggling around as if it was coming out to grab me. The underwater oasis was truly a sight to see.
The eye of the monster watches me as its tentacles reach out to bring me in. Fish sway through the water like leaves in the wind. Sparkling treasure glows brighter than the jellyfish bouncing in the waves. Ships still as rocks as creatures swim through. The sound of whales like a song as beautiful as the sparkling ocean. Seaweed like a maze as the fish twist and turn around each other. A mermaid's tail swishes back and forth then disappears into the rocks. Fish flee as the shark draws near, hungry for a little snack. Divers sink lower to the coral ocean floor next to the coral reefs. Monsters' tentacles snatch fish for supper. Schools of fish swim through the seaweed closer to the eye of the kraken. This is what the fish have done for the past few minutes. Let's go check on the fish later. Well, the shark hasn't had dinner yet.
Hi, my name is Agnes, and I'm in grade one. Splash splash, we all go, fish go blubblub. We, where are we? I think we are in the ocean, said Musa. We all go into the ocean. We kick, we all paddle our arms and kick our legs to go deep in the water. We hold our breath. What, said Agnes, we can talk underwater. Who said Connor? I feel happy. We saw jellyfish and turtles. The pink jellyfish was swimming, and one of us wanted to touch it, but we could not catch the jellyfish because it was too fast. All of a sudden, Miss Jones, we all said. She asked us where we were. We told her we were in the ocean. We all head back to shore. We bury each other in the sand. We had such a great time under the ocean.
Hi, my name is Ashi, and I'm in third grade. In the underwater oasis where the treasure lies and swimmers are up top with the sharks in the rise, fishes and seaweed and other things, but the most cool is the jellyfish things. There's Nemo there and everywhere, and underwater flowers beneath them, bubbles and bubbles and a secret light, and when you enter the cave, you get a fright. Now, it's time to see where the ship lies and the ocean friends live inside. There's a skeleton hand creeping inside the treasure box where he brews and brews to find a golden one and also to have some fun. So beware, beware of the hurtful sharks where they roam on the tip of the bars. They say a ghost lives beneath the water and pokes you and pokes you until you say, "Stop it, I can't breathe, I'm underwater." So, the underwater oasis is a cool place to be, but beware, beware, so you don't get caught when it says exit there. Done.
Hi, I'm Chris, and I'm in second grade. Once upon a time, there was a fisherman that was going out in the sea. As he got on his boat, he felt excited and nervous at the same time. He was excited about what he would catch, but he was nervous about the sharks. He didn't know if he would run into one or anything. Hours after he left, he felt a little tug on his fishing pole. It was a fish that made him yell. I got it! The fish kept on tugging. The fisherman stood there for a minute, thinking if it would do something, but all it did was tug. Then the fisherman started to pull. The fish tugged harder as he reeled it in. Then the fish tugged really hard, almost causing the fisherman to fall. The boat started to move faster and faster, then it stopped. The fisherman then heard a bang. He started going down. Then the fisherman thought, "Am I sinking?"
Hi, my name is Victoria, and I'm in third grade. A sparkling ocean shines brightly under the sky. Fish swim around under the water and play together while green seaweed wobbles. Sea pink flowers bloom beautifully. There was a human named, scuba diver named Mike, who came looking for some treasure under the sea. Mike was doing a treasure hunt, and if he is done before night, he can share with his class. Mike put on his scuba diver suit, and he went into the ocean water and tried to look around for some treasure. There were lots of fish who lived with their family. Later that day, when Mike was swimming, everything was so magical. Turtles were eating green seaweed. Jellyfish were glowing as colorful as fireworks. Sharks worked together with stingrays. Seahorse, clownfish told jokes. Dolphins were fighting with sharks, and seahorses blew bubbles through their mouths. Octopuses bounced up and down like they were on the trampoline, and seashell shines like stars. Even the ocean animals, plants, and shells are cute, too. Everybody loves the ocean.
Hello, my name is John, and I'm in fourth grade. Just as I stepped into the underwater world, I saw jellyfish dancing, sharks stalking through the still water, and a sunken ship with a wooden chest full of gold and riches. I loved how there was little secrets you can find in the deep, dark ocean. It gave me adventure and maybe, and really made me feel like I was in the ocean. Whoever knew that sea was so calm or rough? The underwater oasis was very pleasant. I enjoyed the soothing noises that the whales made. The sound the whales made almost put me to sleep. Being there made me feel like I was actually under the ocean. There wasn't a lot of detail, there was so much detail, and I could not stop writing about how dazzling the scene was, with the bloodthirsty sharks and the giant chest full of glitter and very inviting gold. One of my favorite things was the colossal kraken with its eyes the color of the horizon and its tentacles ten times my size and its suction cups as big as paper plates, and the fish were very neon and colorful. They blended in perfectly with the watery surroundings. Another cool thing I noticed were the fish's bubbles floating up to the surface. By the golden sparkly chest lies an old and bony skeleton hand reaching for a handful of doubloons. With friendly turtles floating over my head with their triangular fins, another cool thing I saw in the magnificent ocean were silky jellyfish. I think of them as the ocean's angels, with their stingers as white as snow. With their amazing colors, they were like a Christmas tree in the ocean.
Hi, my name is Connor Marley, and I'm in first grade. There was a nervous scuba diver who went in the ocean and saw a jellyfish, shark, a clownfish, and a goldfish. Later, on the scuba diver saw a coral reef and a seahorse. The scuba diver's name was Jake. He had a black suit, a yellow cape, and orange flippers. He saw a giant octopus. The octopus came up, and the octopus had big tentacles. The octopus came up and squeezed Jake. Ah! The octopus squeezed Jake for one hour, and then Jake got out. He felt happy because he got away from the octopus. Jake was tired, so he floated in the water for a little bit, and a coastguard boat found him. Then the coastguard told a coastguard helicopter to come and take Jake to safety. Jake went to a little house to sleep for one night and then went back home.
My name is Mahir, and I'm in third grade. There was a beautiful coral reef, but in the corner of the reef, there was a sunken ship. We got back in the submarine and drove over to the shipwreck. As I laid a foot on the ship, it immediately started to creak. There were barnacles sticking to the walls and algae on all the windows. The floorboard was broken. There was a skull and crossbones on the flag. It must have been a pirate ship. Watch your step, I told Sally. As we walked, I saw a door ahead, and he opened it. A fish scurried out of a crack in the ship as we walked closer. Then we saw a light behind another door. How many doors are there, I mumbled to myself. We walked closer, and then I noticed that the light was in electric eels energy. Then a whole bunch of eels swam out of the darkness of the shadows. Look over there, I exclaimed, pointing at the scrawny slimy creature. We swam through the doors and through a hole in the floor. Let's never go back in there again, remarked Sally. We swam back up to the submarine, and then Dad said, "Remember the deal?" Fine, I grunted. As we swam back up to the beach, I saw the treasure floating in the shallow aqua water from the corner of my eye. Look, it's the treasure, for real, I hollered. I don't believe in your failure tales, okay, Marco, Dad said. Besides, we searched everywhere. I'm not kidding, I yelled, it's right there. But when Dad turned his head, he stood corrected. I told you so, I chuckled. We swam out and grabbed the treasure, and we went back up to shore. We opened the treasure chest, and we saw a lot of jewels such as emeralds, diamonds, and rubies. There were necklaces and even a crown. There was also gold everywhere in the massive chest. We loaded the submarine and the treasure into the truck. We drove back home, and the first thing we saw was my mom. Where did you go, Mom, asked Dad. Um, shopping, he said. Then Mom called from downstairs. Did you do your homework?
Hi, I'm Nina, and I'm in fourth grade. Weird orange squid drift past me as I rise above a spooky cave. Suddenly, huge pink tentacles crawl up from inside the cave. There is a loud rumbling, and when it stops, the tentacles reach out to eat me for lunch. I swiftly dart back to the strange place with the weird slimy seaweed. As I carefully dig deeper into the dark gray rocks and pale white sand, I discover a rose-red, astonishing orange, and great green group of plants. All of a sudden, fish of all colors hurry to hide behind spiky teal coral. Shark, as it beautifully passes over me, I notice a sticky green goo. My eyes are then glued to a mountain of red striped fish heading my way. Bubble, bubble, gentle currents sway me away from the commotion and lead me to shallower water. It's hard not to gasp at everything in the ocean. Woo! The bellin' blue whales sing their songs. Dolphins come over to splash with me. Splash splash. The sun drops down and shines on me as I trudge through the soggy sand. Red, orange, and gold flashes across the dust sky. The fluffy white clouds change into cotton candy pink. After the sun sinks into the horizon, I head back home. These new memories of mine will never be forgotten.
Didn't they do a phenomenal job? Let's give them another round of applause. Excellent. You know, I'm always so impressed at how much poise these children are speaking in front of about 50 people. I thought they did an extraordinary job. And students and parents, if you'd like to stay for a few more minutes, we do have another student presentation from the high school, and then we're going to take a break and thank you and greet you. Really wonderful job. One other thing for parents and students, you will be on TV, on YouTube. Yeah, that's right. And that's going to happen, check on whens, they usually get it within 24-hour notice. So, very nice job. Thank you so much, our friends from Sunnymead Elementary School. Now, we'd like to shift gears to our high school. We'll see some of our youngest students, and then we'll see some of our oldest students, and they're going to be sharing with us their work in the, with the REACH internship program. I think you'll find it very interesting, so please join with me in welcoming our high school principal, Ms. Karen Binger.
Good evening, everyone. If the entire purpose of a public education is to prepare our students for the world that awaits them after graduation, then there is no better example of that than the combined effect of tonight's two student spotlights. From the roots of the Hillsborough school system comes the Sunnymead Elementary students, who so eloquently and enthusiastically presented on their immersive underwater writing experiences, pun totally intended, using their creativity, language skills, and love of learning to express themselves, their dreams, and their imaginations. From Sunnymead and the other elementary schools, the students of Hillsborough Township Public Schools will next travel and grow right here in the Autton Road Intermediate School, and then at Hillsborough Middle School, before embarking upon the last leg of their journey as Raiders at Hillsborough High School. And what a profound journey this is. We have the pleasure of watching adorable, eager learners join us at age five and then mature into the young adults that I am honored to present to you tonight. The Hillsborough High School REACH Senior Option Internship Program provides our seniors with an opportunity to learn from practitioners in the fields of interest to them, work in their offices, and learn in the most authentic, real-world ways possible. The connections forged between the students and the mentors is a strong one, and our students are given the chance to show how mature, responsible, articulate, and well-educated they have become. As they speak tonight, remember that they started out just like the Sunnymead students you saw just a moment ago. My, how they have grown, and how fortunate we are to be placing our trust in them to steer the course of the future of our world. Now, with more information about Now with more information about the Reach Senior Internship Program, I'm proud to present Mrs. Patty Yellwazdike, social studies teacher and Reach Coordinator at Hillsborough High School. And I would also like to thank her for all of the work that she does to make the Reach program such a resounding success for our students, our school, and the community. To introduce our students and present the rest of our program, Mrs. Yellwazdike.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Ms. Binger for the opportunity to spotlight the Reach Senior Internship Program at the high school. Since 2005-2006 school year, 12 years ago, the Reach Senior Option Internship Program has been providing students with an opportunity for community service work, exploring a career path of interest, and developing practical skills and training while assisting a local organization or business that serves the public interest. The actual design of an internship emerges through the interactions of each mentor and intern over a period of time at the beginning of the semester. After that, the internship develops according to the skills and capacities of the intern and the needs of the internship site. Student interns are required to work four and a half hours a week at their internship site. Interns submit electronic journals where students reflect on their experiences, describing what they gave and gained from their internships. In addition, students with their mentors' help design and complete a special capstone project that leave their internship sites better places than when they found them. Interns receive two and a half hours of credit on a pass/fail basis. The partnerships between the school and host internship sites earn rave reviews from students and community leaders. While the students have an authentic, hands-on experience, the community partners benefit from the service hours and capstone projects that the students complete. The program offers a large variety of internship opportunities and experiences. In total, our students work with four different law firms, four different physical therapy businesses, 13 different Hillsborough Township Departments, United Way of Northern New Jersey, Somerset County Division of Social Services, Office on Aging and Disabilities, Sauerland Conservancy, Hillsborough Funeral Home, Bellmead Orthodontics, Bellmead Animal Hospital, Mathnasium, and Xerapath Health Clinic, just to name a few. Those are just a few of the places that coordinate with our students. The Reach program has grown significantly in the last 12 years. When it started, there were approximately 10 students interning each semester. Next year, we will have 65 student interns in the community. 35 in the first semester and 30 in the second. The students and their experiences are a testimony to the program's success. And at this time, I'd like to ask each of the current Reach interns behind me to come up and talk about their experiences. They are all seniors in high school. They are getting ready to graduate. And I can tell you that most of them have an AP exam in the morning. So they are top notch.
Uh, good evening. My name is Rohil Chada. And starting this March, I had been an intern for Hillsborough Township's Office of Sustainability uh, that is located in the municipal building. And to be honest, when I first started this internship, I wasn't really sure what sustainability was. Um, my first choice was actually to be a part of the Business Advocate Office. But I was glad to have received an opportunity nonetheless. And I was actually enlightened to learn about sustainability from Mr. David Coys, our township's Business Advocate. So this year, I've been working on an inventory that compiles all of Hillsborough's recreational and open space uh, blocks and lots that we could provide to the state in order to gain funding toward these plots and develop them into something for either attraction or recreational purposes. And through this process, I've learned several different skills. I've learned about all of the different easements and retention basins that go into uh, developing blocks and lots and how convoluted the process of creating a town really is. And I'm grateful of this, of having this experience because it showed me a different perspective of education that I really didn't know I could experience in high school. And I'm really grateful for Ms. YW for providing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patricia Kolodziewski. And this March, I started interning at the Hillsborough Department of Engineering under Mr. Tom Bellinger. And at first, um, I wanted to go into engineering in college, but I wasn't really sure what type of engineering. I've had experience with biology, chemistry, and physics back at the high school. But I never had a class that truly let me follow a different path and become involved with civil engineering. So when I started this internship, I was really excited to see what civil engineering actually was. Um, and under the guidance of my amazing mentors, I have been able to really understand how much this township actually puts towards the safety of its citizens. Um, civil engineering is what it actually is written as, civil as in for the people. And I learned so much about permits, roads, the safety of how to grade land to ensure that there aren't any floods. And my project this semester is actually working on creating a map of all the retention and detention basins around town um, to ensure that of their upkeep and that they're not getting flooded. And I would really like to thank Mrs. YW for providing us with this opportunity because it really gives students an insight into other career options that you may not get directly from a classroom at the high school.
Hi, I'm Macy Branwine. Most of you usually see me up there, but tonight I'm speaking. Um, so I'm currently interning at Bellmead Physical Therapy. And when I first heard about the Reach internships, I was a junior and I was being recruited for field hockey and I already had an idea of what I want to do. So it was really exciting to hear about these. Um, when I got accepted into the Reach program and I ended up getting my top choice, I was really excited. I used to be a patient over at Bellmead. And now getting the other side of it, I was getting to see both sides of what it's like to be a patient and almost a therapist or at least a helper. And it has opened me up to see like, how exciting my future is because this is what I will be doing in the future. And I've made so many great connections. And I like, I'm in a class right now, even at the high school, called Sports Injuries where I'm even learning like the anatomy of the body and like, all the different parts and how it functions and the muscles. And relating that class to this class and the internship is really exciting because I could directly talk to my mentor about what I'm doing through the actual medical terms, which is really cool. And he'll even like, have me come up to a patient and have me try and diagnose them, which is kind of fun. So seeing what I'll be doing in the future is really exciting. And having a head start, especially for college, is really great. So thank you, Ms. YW, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Thompson. I've been interning at Blandino Law Firm. I decided I wanted to go into law when I was about seven after first seeing Legally Blonde. And since I've known for a long time that I wanted to go into law, I was able to take most of all of the classes related to the law profession in the high school. And it wasn't until the Reach internship that I was provided with an opportunity to use what I learned in the classroom in the real world. With the help of this amazing program and all of the work Ms. YW does to coordinate it, I, I along with my other classmates, were able to get an opportunity that most students don't get until they're in college. And this program reminded and reassured me that going to law is what I want to do in the future. And I believe that this was one of my most valuable and favorite experiences I've been given in the Hillsborough School District.
Hi, my name is Rajshakar and I'm a Reach intern at the Hillsborough Public Library. Uh, at first, I was like, I'm a librarian. Um, it's not what I want to do at 17 years old. But uh, my mentor, Ms. Jansen, was able to see my career interests such as marketing, business analytics, and being a leader. And she was able to incorporate that into my internship. So I was creating library programs and then marketing these things. I was being a leader to all the teen volunteers. And then I was also collecting the library data and then making changes based on these data, based on this data to improve the library. Um, one of the things, one of my projects that I'm doing is a community fair. Uh, it's at the Hillsborough Library, uh, June 9th from 2:00 to 3:00. If you guys want to make note of that. And um, this is where all the Hillsborough High School clubs come together and you know, the community can see what the Hillsborough High School is all about. And you know, you guys can see how we're impacting our community. So I highly recommend you guys coming to that. And I'd just like to thank you, thank Ms. YW. Uh, this Reach program is really great for all of us as high schoolers as we really all need, you know, hands-on experience as we go on to our next step, next step and going to college. So I'd just like to thank you for that. Uh, thank you everybody for coming.
I'm very proud of my interns and I know that we all are. So thank you very much for coming. They all have exams tomorrow, so we'll go, they're going to go home and study. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our Reach interns. I ask for the board's consideration of taking a five-minute recess so that we can meet with the kids, congratulate them, and meet some of their parents. So ordered? Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to reconvene if everybody else is. Um, we are up to the approval of minutes. So I'd like a motion to approve the executive session meeting, uh, meeting minutes of April 30th, 2018. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions, comments on those minutes? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Lorraine is abstaining.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, I'll take a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 30th, 2018. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Alrighty, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Motion passes.
All right, um, we had some correspondence. For the Board President's Report, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the Woods Road family and the HEA and the Municipal Alliance and Borough Safe and all the organizations who participated in the Hope for Tomorrow Family Event on Friday night. It was wonderfully attended. Uh, many of my neighbors attended, not knowing particularly what it was, but just because they were in the neighborhood and they heard some noise. And there was a lot of very joyful noise with teachers dancing and performing for the kids and lots of entertainment and food. And a lot of information that was available for people who wanted to learn more about social, emotional, and mental health issues. So I think it was a really nice combination of, of information and entertainment. And I thank all of the sponsors for doing that. And now I will move to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm pleased to share some great news and upcoming important events with our Board of Education and the Hillsborough community this evening. Hillsborough Township Public Schools, Hillsborough Municipal Alliance, the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Safe Coalition, Hillsborough Somerset Counties, and Empower Somerset will present Hidden in Plain Sight on Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 from 7:00 to 8:30 that evening. And right here in the Autton Road Intermediate School cafeteria. This is an adults-only presentation that will provide parents and caregivers with knowledge about signs that could indicate that a child may be experimenting with drugs or alcohol. The presentation will also include a tour of a staged teen bedroom to point out spots and signs of concerns as it relates to drug and alcohol use. For more information, please visit our district website at www.hts.us. Congratulations to Hillsborough, to Hillsborough Woods Road Elementary School 4th grade student Isabella Vitale. Isabella was selected to receive a silver medal in the 2018 Blick Art Materials Mixed Media Competition. Over 2,500 students from around the country submitted artworks for review by a panel of art educators. The panel selected 45 medalists based upon the entrance artwork and how the artist completed the phrase, quote, "With art I can connect to..." dot, dot, dot. As a silver medal recipient, Isabella will receive a medal as well as a $50 gift coupon to Blick Art Materials for herself and a $100 gift coupon for her art teacher, Ms. Samantha Banker. Congratulations to Isabella. On May 5th, at the New Jersey National History Day Contest, two Autton Road Intermediate School 6th grade students and their advisor walked away with high praise and recognition for their hard work. Congratulations to Haley DeSay, who earned a spot at the national contest to present her exhibit on the Cuban Missile Crisis. The top two entries in each of the contestants' five categories are invited to the national contest. The national competition will be held June 10th through 14th at the University of Maryland in College Park. Congratulations also to Samara Gupta, who was honored by the New Jersey League of Historians for her exhibit on Alice Paul. Autton Road Intermediate School teacher and National History Day co-advisor, Mrs. Nancy Patrick, was honored at the May 5th contest as the New Jersey History Day Outstanding Teacher for the Middle School Division and has also been nominated to represent New Jersey in the competition for the National James F. Harris Teacher Award, which recognizes outstanding teachers. The two winners of this national award will each receive a $5,000 check to recognize their commitment to engaging students in historical learning through innovative uses of primary resources, implementation of active learning strategies to foster historical thinking skills and participation in the National History Day Contest. Congratulations to Samara, Mrs. Patrick, and Haley. And good luck to Haley and Mrs. Patrick as they move on to the national competition. Congratulations also goes out to the Hillsborough High School Boys Track Team. Last week, the Raiders took home the Skylands Conference Championship team title, their first team title since 2003. Congratulations specifically to Tyler Boatwright and Austin Castellano, who each had top four finishes in two individual events. Tyler won the 100-meter dash and in third place in the 200-meter dash. Austin claimed 3rd place in the 400-meter hurdles and took 4th in the 110-meter hurdle. Tyreek Alabani claimed silver in the shot put. Joseph Sabo earned 3rd place in the high jump. Kennedy Penn earned 2nd place in the 400-meter dash. And the 4x400-meter relay team of Tyler Kennedy, Dom DiNardi, and Thomas DeLuca earned a 2nd place finish as well. Congratulations to the entire Raider Boys Track Team and Coach Eric Rosenthal on their team title. This past Friday evening, as, as our president mentioned, a family event to support and raise awareness for social and emotional and mental health, um, a program called Hope for Tomorrow was held at Woods Road Firehouse. This event was attended by students, teachers, staff members, parents, community members, administrators, and a few board members as well. The event provided those who attended with information on support and outreach groups, entertainment, contests, food, games, crafts, and more. A big thank you to the Hillsborough Education Association and its members who sponsored this wonderful evening with the support of Borough Safe, Woods Road School, Home and School Association, as well as the many community members who provided support. Thank you so much for the wonderful evening. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Great. Okay, moving right along, we are up to comments from the board and the public. Um, before we move into that, I'd like to say we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. The first time is at the beginning of the meeting, this, and the second time is at the end of the meeting. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public sessions. With that, is there any public comment?
Actually, Judy, can I do just a quick update?
Sure.
Um, so I just wanted to report on last Friday's Municipal Alliance meeting. Um, in time for prom and graduation, the Alliance will sponsor the Parents Who Host Lose the Most campaign and you'll start seeing lawn signs around town. Um, the second thing is that the Alliance also sponsors the Hero Campaign for Designated Drivers. Um, I think mentioned at the last board meeting, there's going to be free Narcan training this Wednesday, May 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the municipal building. Also, actually, we just found out today, there's another hiding in plain sight talk next Wednesday, May 23rd. It's different than the one that the Autton Road School- It's different than the one that the Autton Road School is hosting. It's actually presented by Timothy Shoemaker, who I believe is a former DARE officer, and I heard him speak out in Franklin with some community members, and he was really amazing. Like, he was, like, he showed you how to hide things that your kids might be hiding. It was like out of this world, informational. So there's some informational flyers on the side table over there that you can pick up. And then also, I'm going to put Deena on the spot, on Saturday night, I got to see the Hillsborough High School Theater's mystery dinner performance called Dinner at 8:00 Dead by 9:00. It was really fun, dinner and dessert were delicious, and the kids were having a ton of fun. And Deena's son, Evan, played the bumbling inspector, so we, we really enjoyed it. So the next show that Hillsborough High School Theater is presenting is Almost Maine on Friday, June 8th, and Saturday, June 9th. And finally, the Hillsborough Debate Club is presenting Unplugged, an acoustic concert on Friday, May 25th at the high school. So that's my update.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comment? Board or public? Okay, moving right along. We can now take care of the education part of the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education: to approve travel and related expenses, to affirm the HIB list, approve the overnight field trip as listed, and to approve the field trip definitions as listed. Also, to approve the NSSIG NJ SIG Safety Grant in the amount of $18,000, approximately $18,000. Also approve two out-of-district placements.
Okay. May I have a motion for the education agenda?
Some move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions on any of the items, number 11-1 through 11-7? Okay, I'll take a roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swiswan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources: to approve the suspension of an employee, to also approve retirements and resignations, specifically Diane Beverier, a teacher of English at Hillsborough High School who has been with us since September 1st of 2001. We thank her for her many years of service to the children of this community. Also, to rescind six-period coverage, to approve contract changes for, for next year as well as approve transfers and changes in assignments, approve revised leaves of absences as well as leaves of absences, and approve the appointments as per attached And approve additional, approve additional appointments as per attached, including teachers, instructional assistants, long-term subs, and co-curricular advisors, approve student teachers, six-period coverages, pre-approve extra-period coverage as well as extra-period coverage. To approve the renewal of HEA non-tenured certified staff for next year, also approve the renewal of HPSA non-tenured staff. To approve unaffiliated non-tenured administrators, and approve the renewal of instructional assistants for the following year.
Are there any questions or comments about, oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion for the HR agenda?
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments, or anything about items 12.1 through 12.17? No? Moving right along, roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swiswan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We're up to the operations agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations: to approve resolution to participate in the Eric North Insurance Consortium, to approve resolution to participate in coordinated transportation services, to terminate participation in Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Benefits Plan, and to accept the proposal for health benefits from Aetna. And motion to accept the donation from the Homeschool Association, Sunny Mead, for $16,800 worth to be spent on window air conditioning units in five of Sunny Mead's classrooms.
Okay. May I have a motion for items 13-1 through 13-5, please?
Some move.
Thank you, Greg. Second? Anne? Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swiswan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Informational items are presented for the board's review, and that brings us to the second public commentary.
Are we going to second public comment?
Yep.
Okay, second public comment. Same rules apply. Step right up.
Good evening. Kelly Villano, 87, Meadowbrook Drive. I just, I wrote a few notes. I don't want to read all of them, but I'm going to read just a little bit. For years, as long as I can remember, back when Dr. Gulick was here as superintendent, Hillsborough has always prided itself on the fact that we were one of the lowest per pupil cost in the, I think it's in the county. And with being the lowest, we still provided our students with an outstanding education as we do currently. At the last board meeting, it was shared that we are $750 less than this, I think it's the state average, in terms of educating our students. So when I looked at that number, $750 per student, and then multiplied that by about 7,000 students, we're talking $5.25 million. That's a lot of money. So thinking about flat state aid and the possibility of building a new high school, I'm just, you know, just kind of thinking about these numbers and wondering how this is all going to come to be. Because for years, the budget remained below cap. So we've never really caught up. We've never made it to where we should be. So we find ourselves in this predicament. My second concern was the April 9th special meeting. It is my understanding that all meetings either have to be recorded or transcribed, and I know that Dr. Antunes took notes the best that she could. My question is that I'd like to know, and I know that you don't always answer questions, so I'd like to know, who has the authority to decide if a meeting will be videotaped or will not be videotaped? So that's one question. I'd like to know who makes that decision because I wasn't, when I watched the last meeting, it sounded like there were some board members that did not agree that it was not videotaped. So I'd like to know, you know, if that is a group decision, a decision by, I don't know, Dr. Schiff or the president of the Board of Ed, I'm not really sure. So that was a second, that was a second question. I also found it interesting in watching the last meeting that the April 9th meeting, the special meeting, was 99% conversation or 95% conversation. When I have sat through board meetings to listen to all of the...
That is time, Madam President.
Ms. Schiff, please.
...special meetings about the strategic planning, and I really would have liked to have heard that conversation. So I know that that's my three minutes, so here are my other couple of questions. Where can I find the notes for the April 9th meeting, as I did not see them as an attachment on the last Board of Education agenda? And really, I guess that's, that's my biggest question. And really, I would love to know why the decision was made not to videotape it, because I think that, you know, sitting through strategic planning meetings, especially the one for the high school, that was a good two hours long, I would have loved to have heard the conversation, knowing that the board members really kind of deliver us to where we become. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of quick things. Our minutes are posted online. Mr. Mahmood?
Yes.
They're posted online?
Yes. After the board approves them.
Yeah, after the board approves them, and they're, they're available online. That particular meeting, although it was noticed, and we did have public that attended, and we have, and we have, and we have minutes to those meetings, we'll continue the conversation about whether or not all meetings need to be videotaped and projected. We did have public comment at those meetings, the people who were there participated. But I anticipate, and I hope, that we will have many public conversations about the strategic plan, in particular, as we begin to talk about costs and about what is educationally beneficial, what's affordable, and what we think our community will support in terms of a referendum. We will have multiple conversations about that as time goes on. Thank you. Thank you very much. Step up, madame.
Hi. Alina Misari, Hillsborough High School, Hillsborough Education Association, second vice president. It's been a while, so just wanted to give you some good news from around the district. Woods Road teachers, along with their Homeschool Association, held an amazing talent show for their students. Teachers Mary Beth Mealy and Jen Peterson, in conjunction with HSA member Kelly Ward, planned a fabulous night. Students loved to see the staff dance through the decades. Additional staff members helped to collect tickets, get the acts onstage, and sell DVDs. If you've not yet seen the performance, I suggest check it out. It's pretty fun. I think it's on YouTube. Thank you to Mary Beth Mealy for submitting this report. Alyssa Green, along with Deena Stoff and Margie Rothblatt, planned the first-ever STEAM night at Woods Road School. Working with parents from Woods Road, students enjoyed a fun night exploring science, technology, engineering, art, and math activities. Staff and parents ran several stations so that several hundred families could see what STEAM is all about. A special thanks to Alyssa Green for submitting this report. Woods Road staff came out to support Picto Night run by the Woods Road HSA. Staff emceed the event, handed out prizes, kept track of what picks were called, and cheered their students on. Staff also donated many prizes for the raffle, ranging from lunch with a staff member to game time with a staff member. A special thanks to Sue Dushenzo for submitting this report. The Triangle Schools Sunshine Club, along with staff, hosted a mom-son pizza party and asked for donations of children's snack food items for the Hillsborough Food Pantry. They collected three overflowing shopping carts of juice boxes, Goldfish crackers, and more snacks. A special thanks to Deb Mamawala for submitting this report. See you guys next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jane Stats 101, Devonshire Court. Not to beat a dead horse, but regarding videotaping the meetings, our district prides itself in going above and beyond what's, what has to be done, what is legally required or whatever. So I do think it'd be a good, good idea to videotape all special meetings, like the one that was, that occurred a few weeks ago, especially because there was a difference of opinion as to what was said. Some board members were disagreeing as to what was said. So for, that's a really good compelling reason to videotape meetings in the future. And also, I would, I would just appreciate it if people would always speak to each other in a respectful manner, regardless of what the subject matter is, or who the person is, or the history, or background. I think everyone's always entitled to respect, and also, if, I still get nervous speaking up here, not like the, the students are up, they're amazing. But if someone were to experience, you know, seeing somebody else being treated disrespectfully, that could keep people from being willing to, or feeling comfortable to come up here and speak. And hopefully, we pride ourselves in welcoming comment and difference of opinion in a public commentary when they come up here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there is no further comment, I think we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you next week.